I couldn't record, so I went up and Steve updated it. And he had ghosts as his guests to the tag. But it's weird like it'll link down.
Can I run one out for them?
Yes, if you want to add it to it. No, they didn't, they didn't tag us at all on any of this today.
Um, Tim said that concrete under the.
I apologize to everybody.
No.
I have stolen and lost track of time.
I haven't used that one as an excuse before.
That'd be perfect for me.
I guess this is mine?
I'd be so believable.
I know.
This is right there, right?
I know.
It's very true about Lisa Champ.
Hi.
Lisa Champ.
Hi, nice to meet you, Patty Evans.
Thank you, Patty.
She said we're not.
Vice Chair?
Yeah.
Thanks. Who's Vice Chair? My Vice Chair?
I believe so.
Okay.
I think you've been duly elected.
Oh.
You, yes, you are Vice Chair.
Okay, okay.
We need to, that was for last year. Now we gotta do it for this year.
Mark was always here, so I never had to do it before, so.
No, it's here.
Okay, uh, several.
Oh, it's called floodplain.
Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am, we're trying to deal with the YouTube.
Okay, it's six ten. Uh, I'm gonna call meeting to order. Uh, what you call world place?
Yes, ma'am.
Patty?
Yeah.
Joan?
Yes.
Anita? Brian?
Lisa?
Is this on?
Uh, Bob, is this on?
It's not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The red button? Want to start over? No, don't have to, okay.
All right. So we have a quorum. Okay, we have consideration and action on consent agenda. We have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do we have two, Bob, do we approve these one at a time? Or can we approve all of these minutes at one time?
Consent agenda is one thing.
Uh, B, we have an approval of minutes of the special meeting on May twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, approval of minutes of the special meeting on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Approval of minutes of the special meeting on July eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And the approval of minutes of the special meeting August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I hear any discussion on the minutes or motion?
Make the motion that we approve those, the consent agenda.
I can second.
Okay, and just of the minutes on it, not the whole consent agenda, because.
No, the whole consent agenda, it would be the whole thing.
Okay. Oh, okay, so we're not.
Just make a motion.
Read the rest of it, acknowledgment of resignation of Mark Wilson from Planning Commission effective August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. And acknowledgment of Lisa Champ appointment to Planning Commission effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Okay, now we have a motion to approve it.
I shall move.
Am I seconded?
Okay.
Brian?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Item three, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda, and we had none. Item four, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the Planning Commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Do we have anything that we want to discuss? Okay. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to elect a chairperson. Do I hear, uh, somebody nomination?
I will move that we nominate Patty Evans to be chairperson.
I second.
That was quick.
You call. Joan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
I could say no, rug thing. Uh, item six, consideration, discussion, and possible action to elect a vice chairperson till here nomination.
I nominate Brian.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Joan?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Brian?
Uh, yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Uh, item seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint Gene Henkel as secretary.
I shall move.
Second.
Patty? Brian?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Joan? Yes.
Item eight, consideration and discussion of calendar year twenty twenty-three meeting dates.
I'd say we're meeting once a month for next year.
So, um, by state law, we have, the City Commission has to approve regular meeting dates for all the reports in itself. So we have to work ahead so that we can have our dates ready to give to them before December fifteen. Because there is a comprehensive plan underway, which Bob would probably want to say something about. I wonder if you all would want to go ahead and plan to meet monthly just in advance? And that way the date's set, and then if we don't need the date, we can always cancel the meeting. Or if you wanted to do every other month, then you could do the special meetings. Special meetings, you know, they need to call everybody and say, are you available this day? Are you available that day? So it's, it's a little easier on ours, I think, so we do regular meetings and then cancel. But if you don't want to, that's how we feel, and you can do whatever you want to. So we just propose some dates, and then you all can discuss and decide how often you want to meet.
Well, personally, I like to have the dates, so I can just go ahead and fill out my calendar. Like you said, if, if we don't need it, it'd be canceled. Does anybody else have any comments?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I move that we accept the proposed calendar dates.
I second it.
Oh, I'm so sorry, this is just the discussion one.
Okay.
Okay, that's right. Okay, uh, number nine, consideration, discussion, and possible action to recommend calendar year twenty twenty-three meeting dates to City Commission.
So moved.
I second it.
Brian?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lisa? Yes.
Item ten, consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint one or two members of the Planning Commission to the Activate Perkins Steering Committee for the Conferenceee Plan Update with the University of Oklahoma.
So we were content, we put in for a grant, Amy Peterman and Sarah Gold from TSET and Melinda Caldwell from formerly of TSET helped write a grant, a planning grant to Oklahoma University, to the graduate students in the Planning Department. And we were awarded that grant. So basically, it's the same group that worked on the Capital Improvement Plan in early two thousands. Um, and they're gonna, their proposal's in your packet, it's called Activate Perkins. Um, they're gonna do the resident meetings, we're gonna have a steering committee, and there's gonna be a lot going on. But we would like to, um, have one or two members of the Planning Commission on the steering committee that can meet with the students and conduct meetings and things like that.
Let me ask a question about the schedule that they have on here. Um, I see that their proposed project schedule was supposed to start in October and September. So is that being pushed back, or have they started gathering information?
They have started gathering information. I have met with them via Zoom one time and a person one time. They have been here. So they're kind of in the preliminary gathering data and information, and they move into the.
Community meetings here, you're saying?
Yep.
Okay.
Who sets those meetings up, the community meetings?
We will, staff will with the assistance of OU.
Okay.
Okay. Do I hear any other discussion or questions about the?
Is this consideration and discussion? This is, okay.
We need to, if we want to appoint anybody to the committee, we'll have to nominate them, I suppose. And vote on them.
And you would like, you would like to, you say?
Okay. Would somebody like to nominate her?
I nominate Lisa Champ.
Okay.
I second it.
Yes, do you want one or two?
That would be, if you were talking to me, that's up to you all.
I'm just kinda talking to everybody. You want one or two?
I say the, the more input there is, our opinions, um, I think it would benefit us.
Anybody else have anything to?
I'll nominate myself.
Thank you. I'll nominate myself, I think. Okay, so I'll second it.
Okay.
I wonder, um, can we?
Why not?
I don't know.
Yep.
I did me.
It, it happened, it just happened.
Okay.
Hope I don't go to jail over that. That'd be a big letdown.
So, um, Joan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, number eleven, consideration, discussion, and possible action to consider planned use development of PUD for Freedom Living Perkins LLC located at or near Lover's Lane and Pam's Drive.
So this, um, I have failed to communicate with the Planning Commission on this. For that, I apologize. But basically what happened is there was a senior living PUD that was before the Planning Commission a while back, and then it went to the City Commission and was rejected. So there were some changes made. The engineers are here, Stephen Ghost and Katie Purdy are both engineers, and they're both here to discuss it. And all, it's, it's changed names to Freedom Living. Staff has worked on it pretty closely with, um, Katie and I constantly talk about it. And I also met with the developers that are proposing the PUD. And there's basically been sidewalks added inside and a gate added to the west side. So it'll be restricted entrance.
So as Bob mentioned, like, you guys have seen this.
You guys could come down here if you'd like, or however you want to.
The, the overall site plan remains the same. Like Bob said, we changed the name, we had senior in the name. There were some concerns, understandably, from the City Council about having that in the name when the client, our client can't deed restrict. This is gonna be marketed to a fifty-five and older demographic. They're gonna try to rent it up, but for financing, they need the flexibility that if for some reason there's a few empty units, that they can go ahead and rent it. But again, they're designed, and they're gonna be marketed to fifty-five and up, but they can't restrict, restrict it to fifty-five and up. Just the market won't let them do it. So we've changed the name, we added a sidewalk along the back of curb along our street. Um, we added a sidewalk connecting out here to the sidewalk on Lover's. We've added a gate right here that'll meet fire codes and the city requirements. We're proposing a slider that'll slide to the north. Then as Bob mentioned, we've, we've added, um, four-foot sidewalks along the back of curb along the front with a connection out to, to Karnes.
And is there a gate on the east?
So down here, this is an emergency exit only, this is remain the same, it's twelve foot wide. We're gonna put gates here to prevent cars from going either direction, and they'll have fire, you know, fire access keys on them.
So, so it's all on the corner circle?
The access is only off of Karnes. This is only in that case where a fire engine or something has to access the site and can't back out.
Right. So will this be the same type of gate?
No, it'll be a, a solid board or a chain that's locked, and then it'll have the Knox box on it. So only the fire department can get in there and get the key to open it. It's pretty standard on commercial buildings and subdivision gates like this.
Is this the same situation that they were talking about at the commission meeting where they wanted two gates?
Yes.
So this has been added?
That was there.
That's been there.
This has been added.
Can you expand a little more?
So, so there's some concerns about, well, what we heard some of the commissioners say is they would like full access from Karnes to Lover's. From a development standpoint, that's not desired because we don't want people driving through that aren't part of this. It's a private street today, and so if we open it up, then we gotta make it, we would want to make it a public street and all of that. We can't, the site, we can't do a cul-de-sac turnaround at the end, because it's gotta be ninety-six feet in diameter. Then we gotta push the buildings back twenty, twenty-five feet from that to have the, the driveway approaches. And it just, it puts the buildings way at the, the extreme. Same with a T turnaround, we just don't have enough room to do it with this configuration of buildings.
So, so only residents are going to be coming in this?
Correct, I mean, there'll be a keypad, um, for visitors. My understanding is the residents will probably have a clicker, you know, that they can pull up and click it. And then on the way out, it'll have the sensors in the pavement.
So like, per, so you would come in, you'd go into a driveway and, and back up and turn around? I mean, for people, like if I lived there, say if I lived here, and I'd come up and go into my garage or driveway and then exit.
Correct, correct.
And if visitors, same thing, they go into.
Exactly. The only people that would ever use this would be, uh, emergency vehicles.
And what about the sidewalks? Are those going to be restricted too?
No, so the sidewalk, for the sidewalks on the north side, we, we cross them right here. And then we come out and we go around the column that's on the gate to get out to Karnes. What you're seeing here, this wide, we're, we're doing roll mounted curbs instead of the barrier curbs.
That's what I figured, okay.
And that north sidewalk doesn't come out because that gate's gonna slide to the north?
Right.
That's why I was wondering, because I could see it looked like it slid across there.
Yeah.
So there's no even access to this by sidewalk, right?
No, we'll, we'll have a sidewalk connection right out here at Karnes. We'll, we'll come back, there, there's a sidewalk all along here and all along this side. And then this sidewalk extends out to the Lover's sidewalk.
So we have the gate, and the sidewalk's gonna come around it?
Around, there, there'll be like a column on either side of the drive to, one will have the gate operator, it's a slider, so it'll have all the operating mechanism. And the other side will just be a column for that gate to tie into and have a symmetric.
There's no fence.
That's what I was leading up to.
Yeah, there's not a, a fence proposed right now, just, they really don't see in their other communities a desire for that and a need for that. They haven't had problems with people coming in and causing trouble. The houses, I mean, these houses have a fence along the back of them, or most of them do. I mean, the apartments, they're to the south.
Except we just had an incident where there were five youth ma, guys that were walking down the street at, I think, ten o'clock in, in the evening. And I had that on my street. You know, nothing has happened yet, but there is the, there's the possibility that they could, you know, be, um, not just visiting or walking through.
Yeah, undesirables.
And especially in, in this, um, arrangement, because they're not, they can't get out here. So they're coming in here, they could be coming in for a reason, um, and it wouldn't be a good reason. At the City Commission meeting, I, I thought it was talked about a fence.
There were some, just some of the commissioners mentioned a fence, others weren't different about it.
And these are gonna be rentals, right?
Correct.
But there, but there is sidewalk access, right? Did I understand?
Yeah, there's sidewalk access.
On this end as well.
Yeah, that, that sidewalk's right here. And so, I mean, we start getting it to now, how is, is it, is it a punch pa, pad for the residents to get in? And so now they're having to fumble with that, does it break? And some pry it open anyways, it's, it's just, and, and you start adding, the more costs we add, the less they can do with amenities inside, because it's a rental. And so there's, there's a fair market rate of rentals, so.
But then rentals.
I, I, I think we should avoid getting too deep in the weeds as to what's gonna be, provide a secure environment for them. I think that should be up to the developer and the community to determine what excess of security they want there.
Well, yes and no. We do, as Planning Commission, we do have the right to, uh, suggest to the City Council changes or anything we'd like to see on here. And then it's up to the City Council, because that's, that's what we're doing, is either approving this as is or approving it with amendments and changes to go to the City Council. So, um, but I, I don't see that we need a fence. I mean, we've got the sidewalks, you don't want to restrict the sidewalks, you know? You want gates on the sidewalk, that's what I was asking a while ago. The gate here is just to restrict traffic, so if anybody's up to no good, at least they can't drive in. If the residents see somebody that doesn't belong, hopefully everybody gets to know their neighbors and everything. And, uh, always call for, yes, well, police to have them come out, that's it. So I don't know that there is a need for the fences myself, but.
I don't remember why the City Commission brought up the need for a fence all the way around.
Well, I don't think they did bring up the need for a fence, but I think one thing we have to remember is this body, it's separate from the City Commission. So you, you are not bound by what the City Commission may think. I, um, for what it's worth, I think a fence around a property this big would be cost prohibitive and possibly kill the project. Especially if you're talking about doing something like wrought iron or something nice that's gonna stand the test of time. Steel is really high.
Right.
And there's a, you know, you have X amount of dollars to do a project, and if you can't do it, then you just pull out.
Right.
And the other thing they could do that we have cussed and discussed quite a bit is they could potentially plat this, spread it out, just make it a through street, and you lose all security. And there's nothing anybody can do with that if it meets zoning. So I think there's a little bit of a, it's obviously a give and take deal like Patty was talking about, but I think we should be a little bit careful. I mean, that's just my opinion, but the, the, what I understood, and may, you know, everybody watches the same thing, it comes away with something different. The gate on the west side, the issue was if people turned down there trying to get to Lover's Lane, there's nowhere to turn around. So you have to go into somebody's driveway.
Right.
Which would be a safety issue. So they were talking about the gate, and then, um, I think there was some, uh, assumptions made that there was, it was a gated community, so there was a fence.
Okay.
I made that assumption, actually, I was one of them, but, um, I, that's not saying you can't tell or recommend that. You can ob, you can absolutely recommend to the City Commission that a fence be installed. That's within your rights, but I think, um.
Then the prospector comes in.
I think it comes in pretty hard, because that.
They get appearance and the maintenance, I mean, because.
I mean, it's big, I don't know.
Six, seven, five acres. That's a four acre size.
I mean, that's a lot of fence, unless you want to.
Did you say there's a fence on the south and the north?
Well, there's some fences in that back.
Privacy.
Only this on the houses.
I don't, the apartments have no fence on the north side.
They're just on the west side, there's a screening fence.
Because they're adjacent to residences, so they have to provide it. And you start putting up a wood fence along something like this, and now it's like, it's no longer inviting to anybody.
And then you have the maintenance of the wood fence, which is a constant pain.
I think you're, you're right about the co, the risk involved in demanding a fence. Um, it could have detrimental effects to the, um, to the future of the development. But I think, and I, I'm just throwing this out, I didn't realize it was gonna be rentals. And that does change the demographics. You know, for, it's, it was proposed, I thought, and I need clarification on that, that it was going to be fifty-five and older only. And that, the, um, then opening it up to everybody, I think that was a surprise to, um.
It got people off guard. And, and the intent is always, again, it's gonna be marketed, it's, it's a senior project. The units are designed with three O doors, roll-in showers, single-car garages, front porches, back porches, one and two-bedroom units.
Single story.
Single story, so the market is that. But we can't say it's only gonna be fifty-five and up because you can get financing for that. I mean, the banks will not, in a, in a project like this, they can't get financing for it because there's not a market study for Perkins for this. They, they think there's a demand, but they don't know if it's a twenty-eight unit demand. If it's only twenty units, they can't have eight units sitting empty. And it's a rental, so they're gonna manage their tenants, they're not gonna rent it to somebody with six kids, you know, because you can't do that in a two-bedroom unit.
Who is they, yeah?
Our, so our clients are Freedom Living, the Freedom Homes, they're, um, our client lives in Stillwater. His brother lives in Tulsa, they're partners on this. And they've got him here, they've got one in Grove and a few other communities.
Did you say the street was gonna stay private?
In this configuration, it is, yes, it's a private street. So the maintenance of that street, long-term, is on the develop- long-term is on the development, not on the residence of Perkins.
So will anybody from Perkins have input on who gets um approved to rent, say a non, someone under fifty-five or over, I guess? Is there anybody local that's going to be?
I mean, right now, there's not provisions for an onsite manager that would live in here that would be the one taking applications and reviewing them and.
Who, and who's going to take the applications and review them?
Our, our client, they, they've got an operating unit that does and manages their rentals around the state. So they've got some people in Stillwater.
We can't, we can't get involved in the private business side of this. We're just here to contemplate the zoning. And uh what a planned unit development does is gives a developer some freedom to get basically variances around them. Zoning provisions. So we have a zoning provision that says only one principal structure on a lot. They're wanting to put four principal structures on a lot. We have a zoning provision that says you can have a whole sixty percent of the area covered with improvements or something. I think it's sixty. So they're wanting to do maybe sixty-five percent or something. So as part of that planned unit development, there's a give and take. Um, and that's kind of what's happening now. If they were to just spread it out, make it a public street, straight through.
Like you said, they can't get any.
And plat it. I mean, four lots.
Say that. Right.
There's nothing anybody could really do.
And if we made them townhomes for sale lots, same thing, anybody could buy one and use it. Live in it or rent it out, so.
And I'm just asking questions that don't apply publicly, but same um, the owner, the developers approve a rental in whatever reason because that's the central district of the south.
I mean, that could happen in the east. It could happen in a house. If there's, if there's sound issues, the city has sound ordinances, noise, you know, noise, odor, you know, it becomes a nuisance issue that the, the police department. Just like any for-sale house, any, anything else. I think in an apartment, you're going to have a lot better, that's going to be controlled. The first level is going to be by the landlord because they don't want to lose all their residents. They have a vested interest in making sure everybody gets along and behaves. Where if it's a for-sale house, you know, the neighbors are on their own. So really, it becomes a, a city, a municipal issue.
And so the arms of the office with a specific rental instance handled by um the city.
The whole name was supposed to be?
That's what we told them. The people, the police and the way out, what happens after that? If it doesn't resolve the problem, do you go then to the?
What is the, what is the problem you're talking about?
What is what?
What is the problem you're talking about? It's basically the same as if you buy a house in Kinderwells with the intent on renting that house out. You're going to control what goes on to some extent. Once you rent it, it becomes their castle according to law. They have certain rights. Um, when they start intruding on others' rights and violate ordinances or nuisance ordinances, we can get involved and send uh nuisance violations, courtesy notices. We could ultimately do an abatement if there's trash or something out there that needs picked up and that goes on the landlord.
Okay.
Which makes them, motivates them if they're not already motivated to do something.
Okay.
And then once that nuisance is taken care of, it just kind of goes back to square one and we go on down the road and see if there's another nuisance.
Is there any restrictions to how many cars can be parked in, in front of a rental?
No, there's not a restriction anywhere in town.
So if there was a, a party and there were a, a lot of cars parked on the street, it would be up to one of the residents to complain if, if there was any block? Did you have a driveway?
Yes, just like everywhere else in town.
Yeah.
I mean, space is going to be, not going to be able to park very many, just from pure space.
Right.
But.
Okay, and there, is there any more discussion on this or questions for Steve or Seth?
I move we approve the plan.
I second it.
Brian?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Uh, twelve, item twelve, consideration, discussion and possible action to approve rules of decorum for Perkins Planning Commission meetings.
I'm just curious to see.
Discussion, I have a question for Bob here in a minute. No, this, you're fine. Uh, yeah, I read over the decorum and I noticed that we are um going to limit each person to five minutes.
Yes.
Um.
They could always request for more.
Yeah, I, so um, I know, in, in the past, when we've had, you know, several people in the audience, uh, there's been like open questions, discussion, you know, coming at us and all this. And I, I know it says no questions to us or comments to us, but are they going to, if they want to speak again, they're going to have to raise their hands? No talking and just automatically talking, they have to raise their hands and be recognized by the chair, right?
Yes.
Okay, even on the second time?
That would also help with minutes.
Yes, yes. Um, do they get another five minutes?
Five minutes total unless they request more and the chair authorizes it.
All right, uh, any other discussion on? Do I hear a motion to, what is that, to approve it?
Joan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yeah, item thirteen, new business under the Open Meeting Act. This agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Do we have any thing we need to talk about?
I, I don't know if this is a planning commission meeting or an email I sent to Bob, but we really need a stop sign on Kinderwells. You're going from Lovers Lane, you turn west onto, yes, west onto Kinderwells, First Street, um, is it, I don't know if it's Pam's or Fourth Street, but we need a, a stop sign there.
You turn where?
From Lovers Lane, turn west onto Kinderwells.
The road that was just painted, just concreted?
Huh, yes.
Okay. We've ordered signage for all that. I don't know whether it's a yes.
Okay, because the, you know, the um, the speed um light warning, that doesn't help. People slow down when they get close to that, that sign or that flashing light, but um, we have a lot of speeders.
Okay, it's, and that's probably not appropriate for this part of the new, new business. We'll take care of it afterwards.
Okay, so I shouldn't have sent an email to you?
Yeah, it's email or call.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
You didn't even let me. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Brian?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Right. Okay, I'm going to call the floodplain board uh to order and it is six forty-seven, forty-eight?
Perfect.
Um, Patty, yes, here.
Brian?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item two, consideration and action on consent, consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of two, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Acknowledgement of resignation of Mark Wilson from Floodplain Board effective August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Acknowledgement of Lisa Champ appointment to Floodplain Board effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I hear any discussion or motion?
I make a motion that we accept.
Second.
Joan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lisa?
Item three was consideration of items removed from the consent agenda and there were none. Item four, public appearances, petitions, communications and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the Floodplain Board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. And I don't believe we have anything on that one. Item five, consideration, discussion and possible action to elect a chairperson. Do I hear any motions?
I nominate Patty.
I second.
Brian?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Lisa? Yes.
Consideration, discussion and possible action to elect a vice chairperson.
I nominate Brian.
I'll second that.
Is that, I'm so sorry, was that Lisa or Joan?
The item.
Joan's very good at nominating others.
Joan?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Item seven, consideration, discussion and possible action to appoint Jean Henkel as secretary.
So moved.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Lisa? Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Consideration and discussion of calendar year twenty twenty-three meeting dates. Any discussion or, can I do, hear a motion?
That's the next item.
Oh, the next one, I, that's right. Consideration, discussion and possible action to recommend calendar year twenty twenty-three meeting dates to city commission.
Make a motion, we accept the dates.
I'll second.
Lisa?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Patty? Yes.
Uh, consideration, discussion and possible action to approve rules of decorum for Floodplain Board meetings. No motion or discussion?
This will move.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
New business under the Open Meeting Act. This agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Bob, you don't have any kind of report or anything, I guess?
No, and it wouldn't be appropriate for new business.
I know.
I, I will do better. I, I will do better.
Well, there wasn't any place else for me to ask.
No, I know, yeah, yeah. Usually city managers report.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Brian?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Can I have a quick question?
Do you have a second?
Yes, I will. And Patty, don't leave. I need you to sign.